Two hours ago, I put my.
We're gonna talk about it.
Yes. So there's two guessing.
We've been sweating like crazy, my goodness. We were at the school, know that big safe I got with the bear and everything? We unloaded that thing today and that thing.
Well, what we're gonna do is just. Yeah, it's all supposed to be the part of our fiber optic stuff, so.
Yeah, if you want, you ain't gotta do it now, just after the meeting or I can come back during the week when you're working or something.
Yep, and that way you know, but you have to go online. And you can also scan with your phone and register. This one here, just take your phone.
Scan it, yeah, I don't know how to do that.
Oh, okay. Well, I know, she has this.
Yes, ma'am.
And you can do it by your phone also.
What, do you take a picture of that?
You can just take a picture of that, then it'll register and you click on it and then. So who do you, you have your electric through Central Products?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
But yeah, if you, they're gonna get those who are registered first.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Belinda.
Where I make all my stuffed animals.
Oh, that's beautiful. Like rain, like hitting concrete, like splattering rain.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, this is rough, dude.
Four three dot zero zero, one point four million dollar check. And what's gonna happen with all the money?
Everybody wants to know.
Everybody wants to know.
To fix the bike?
Find out where's Lacy.
Figure that out.
What's wrong with the bike?
You think it's a gasket?
Yeah, remember when? Do you remember when?
Road King.
What's his name?
Truck conversion.
Although we forgot.
It was a Joe.
Where's that on the LA side?
Uh, it's, so you go south here, you're Crystal River is?
Yeah.
It's just east of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
This is the town?
Just give me an answer, she had to.
It's unincorporated.
Thank you very much, Ms. Belinda.
Then it's a village.
Oh, you made it. Now we're. Now metal detecting, huh? We should go out metal detecting tomorrow.
I just, I just looked at my weather, it says it's supposed to feel like. Oh, my goodness.
Is that wrong?
It's white in some ways. Wrong in some ways.
Yeah, well, yeah. It gets a long way.
Taking one for the two.
Yeah. Thirty minutes until, until the meeting starts.
You are the man, thanks.
I'm the man? I'm not the one wearing the orange jumpsuit?
Why not?
Well, well, I haven't, as much as Lynette has tried, I haven't been arrested as of yet, not yet. How far away did you guys come from?
Well, we started in South Bend, Indiana.
Oh, my goodness.
We retired about a month ago to Greendale. And this is where you come from, your retirement?
This is not right.
You need to say that, I need to know where he escaped from.
Was it, what do you think, was the turtle sanctuary? Where was it, you escaped from where?
South Carolina, but we're in assisted living.
Oh.
Cause I'm nuts.
And you broke out.
I love it.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, that's awesome.
So we're, I'm originally. He's been watching.
He is.
I make it under D.
Take, I repeat what I said.
He's got a little smirk, he's like, yeah. He's like, he knows. You weren't sure. Cause he's probably.
Give it to me, I'm gonna wear it.
That was what his one month old sick was on.
Actually, just bought him new today.
He's what, he's two now? His one month early on the thirtieth. Oh, my God, look at that.
Sup, Sam?
Hey.
Oh, my gosh. He looks hot for me right there. His daddy, his daddy loves.
Here's the damn turtle.
Of course you will.
You know what kind of color that is? Actually, mine is expensive one, Lamborghini.
Oh, is it? Oh, wow, wouldn't even be able to fit in that.
I said, you gonna let your hair drop? He said, hell no.
On the way. No show? I have nothing to that.
Will you still travel?
That was. Past them going home. Hadn't gotten today.
Like, buy tickets and hotel rooms and.
Oh, really? I've heard that every test I've gotten. You get my message, really, be positive, no fear.
I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't. Yeah, I didn't realize that I could just went out and.
I put on a show and a camera and everything, man.
Yeah. Didn't realize that I could just fire.
That's why you didn't get it.
Yeah, I saw.
You missed out on best, best entertainment. There's a shot of. There's the animal.
Where are you sitting?
I do, I've been doing them for, I've been doing them for a long time, small. I can do in nine seconds. Having them cut out, I got, I can smile.
How far do you drive to get here?
I'm riding Crystal River.
High. Yeah.
Not too bad. Think I hurt somebody. You think he drove from Spring Hill? I know Mr. Don.
Yeah, shoot some of your videos, they're pretty cool.
Appreciate it, man.
The magnet fishing and all that, that's pretty cool. Anything good with that magnet or?
John.
It's good vision, June. Stuff in the scrap pile.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, it's cool anyway, kills some time.
Right, yeah. I'm still learning this whole YouTube thing, really, to be honest with you.
Oh, yeah.
Manly how to edit.
Right, right, right.
Edit, edit, it's hard.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Really got special apps to do that with and stuff, yeah.
And you gotta learn what ones are better than, you know?
Right.
The good ones, exactly. So I, I do my research, I do a lot of research about YouTube.
Yeah. You start making any money, you make it, uh?
Uh, YouTube?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm not trying to lie to you.
Really, really? How many, how many subscribers you need to start making money on?
Thousand.
A thousand?
Yeah. You need a thousand subscribers, four thousand watch hours. I got, I got like nine thousand three hundred.
Oh, nice. So, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess you could make a lot of money doing it.
Oh, most definitely.
Yeah.
Most definitely. You can make lots of money.
Somebody was telling me about that years ago, about, oh, hey, I'm like, are you crazy? These people don't get paid and I start finding.
Well, yeah, but back then, they didn't really know how to do it.
Yeah.
People has learned how to do it, obviously, you gotta learn how to do everything, you know?
Yeah.
So you gotta, you know, people, it wasn't really out there that you had to get a thousand subscribers. Plus, I think the rules were a little different back then.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it's still kinda hard to do, you know? YouTube's still kinda hard.
Is it, yeah?
If, if it was easy, I think a lot more people would do it. It's, it's an easy way to. I would, I said, I guess you would say become a thousand there? You know, like a hundred thousand there? I, I mean, you gotta become pretty big to become a millionaire off YouTube.
Right, right, right. What's the, what's the next major step after a thousand, five thousand or?
You got a thousand, you get monetized, and then your next step is to reach a hundred thousand. And you get a silver plaque, YouTube sends you a silver.
Oh, that's when they give the awards out, a hundred thousand.
Yeah, you get that at a hundred thousand, and then at one million, you get the gold plaque. And then, I think if you get, I think the next plaque is like twenty or ten million or so. Yeah, it's, it's crazy jumps, you know?
Yeah.
At a thousand, you don't get no, you don't get no plaque or nothing, you just get monetized. But to get monetized, you have to have four thousand watch hours. And that's hard to do.
Yeah, that's, that's it, yeah.
You have to, people have to watch your videos, four thousand hours worth.
Do they have to be subscribers or do they just, no?
Whether they're subscribers or not, as long as they.
It all counts.
Yep. If they watch your video, into your video, it, it counts as a view.
Oh, alright.
Of course, it's better to, you know, to watch it all the way through and.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, you know.
I think even if most people don't like it, they'd, they'd watch it more than thirty seconds, just to see what, you know.
Or, or they'll skip through it.
They'll skip through it, yeah. I've been watching all this on YouTube, I gotta drag down this YouTube freak show.
That's what it is, it's, it's literally a, a freak show, I mean.
This guy's getting five trucks for five hundred dollars.
You should have, somewhat cheaper than that.
Really?
I think a fire truck sold for a hundred and fifty, or maybe fifty dollars or something.
No kidding.
Yeah, when I was a kid, they, uh, they auctioned a fire truck off legit, I mean, just like they did that one too.
They, they, no, they probably did if they kept them more in-house.
Well, back then, before Jeremy came here, it, nobody come to the town hall meetings. It was maybe, maybe.
Less than a handful of people.
Yeah, five people here, you know what I mean? So he started coming here. That's why the fire trucks went so cheap, because nobody was here, nobody really knew about it.
Nobody knew about it, yeah.
You know, they still put the, the thing up on the border, on the.
Right, but nobody was gonna look at it.
Yeah, nobody really cared, you know?
Yeah.
I mean. How are you?
Good.
Yes, ma'am. So that's how it is. I think I set my water over there. Hey. Is this your water?
Hey.
Is that your water?
Uh, no, that's probably yours.
Yeah, that's what I said, thank you. It wasn't yours, I think it's mine. I was wondering where my water went.
How are you? Did you get the science sheet?
No.
I guess they didn't like the little Mike's lesson.
Yeah, he's checking that out before. These look more professional. Hmm? These look a little bit more professional too.
Right, right, most definitely. Yeah, I, I broke my old phone out. This is your phone? Cause this is what I started YouTube with, and everybody can hear.
Oh, it's better than.
Yeah, so, right, I got this, we've already cracked it, but I think it's just my screen protector. But anyways, I, I got this one and put my phone plant on this one, and can hardly hear the videos.
Oh, wow.
So on this one, you can hear it real good. So I, I'm just gonna take this, I'm gonna use my hotspot, this one ain't on.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna use my hotspot to, to edit and upload it to YouTube and all that.
Years old, they're gonna carry around three hundred and fifty pounds of silver.
Hey, did anybody say English forward in here? In English?
I drove through it.
I'm originally from English.
Did you say it?
I'm not hearing on there.
They must not be coming.
Do you wanna sign your sister's?
After being noted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good God.
How are you? Good.
Down Paul about it.
Good to know.
There he is.
He has a very impressive presentation. So he has burn about.
Two minutes to go. Vice Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that.
Not a mayor.
This is not gonna work out.
If it's one a month.
I was hoping for more, I just wanted. Well, I did too. I'm in Japan sometime. There she is. You looking out, my goodness. The who? The bear?
Alright, it's seven o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Everyone stand, let's do the pledge. Let's please do the pledge. And I'll start with the world tall, Teresa Prentice present. Gail Lamb present. Russell Meeks present. Alright, tonight we wanted to start, we have, um, Fox here to talk about our grants. If you want, you can even sit at that chair and get comfortable.
I think twenty copies, so you can either have one. But pass someone out, we're as far as we're gonna go, I guess. You gotta get another coaster. I can do that. Everybody get a cup? Alright, basically, you've got two grants that we're working with you on. One is a small city, CDBG neighborhood revitalization grant, number twenty-three DV and twenty, and fifteen. And that one's fairly simple, it's just a hundred thousand, it's to do some improvements at your water plant. It includes installing a second ground storage tent, installing a new hydro tank, and then basically flexible hookup. Uh, and then control, updating some of the controls at the water plant, and then the sidewalk that's associated with it. Uh, and that one's pretty, pretty, pretty one that, if you don't have a whole lot of our mental review for it, anyway, that gets done, engineer completes plan, suspects, bid it out, contractor will do the improvements. Any question on that one before you want to go? Okay, the other one's not as simple. The grant that I think the check for is behind you on the wall, uh, this is the one for one million, four twenty-six, three forty-three. We applied for a grant through what was then the Department of Community Fair, uh, Department of, uh, opportunity, excuse me, and is now the Department of Commerce, Florida Commerce. The grant was to run hard wire broadband lines in the ground, all around town, to hook up the low amount of income households that are eligible. And to provide six months' worth of service to the lower money income households that were eligible. And we've got that through the, we developed broadband office through, through some of the COVID money. Meanwhile, while we're going through the environmental on that, the Department, he got on the opportunity, now called the Department of, of, uh, Commerce, Florida Commerce. In their broadband office, which is a totally separate office, had a grant, had, didn't grant, uh, or accept proposals for just the broadband hard lines in the, in the street. It does not involve the hookups, it doesn't involve any service. And, uh, basically, uh, the, I can't name it, the. Florida. Central Florida Electrical Co-op received those funds. And you can't, you can't do what's called to do benefit. So you can't say, well, we don't really wanna get served by Central Florida, we wanna use our money to fund somebody else to run lines. The, the Fed's have a policy that says, if we're putting money out, we have one provider run lines, that's all we're gonna put out. So you don't have the option of going finding a second provider to do that. What we do have the option of doing is getting with Central Florida, saying, okay, guys, you've got money, and you've got some action there, but that's your problem, to run the hard lines in the, in the road. We've got money to, that we can hook up, hook up the low amount of income eligible households, and we can provide up to six months' service. What's that gonna cost per household? And, you know, and how are we gonna coordinate that? So we need to have a meeting with them to sort of work that out. Well, that's really gonna free up plenty of money. It's probably gonna free up somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to nine hundred thousand dollars, that's being conservative. Cause the other thing here is too, we had, there, there's about two hundred thousand dollars in HDBs of bulk, which was to hire a firm to run the lines in the ground. Cause we had to go through a competition in that case. But now that we got the co-op doing it, I mean, you're pretty much, that's the only given workforce to work with. So the question then becomes, what do you wanna do with the seven, eight hundred, that, that, that's a COVID allowable project? Which means you can't do any water and sewer drainage. Basically, the only two real, realistic things you can do here, is you've got enough right of way, come in here and put some five foot wide sidewalks to walk around town. Or if you, if you've either got an existing community center and you can't do this once, cause it can't, you can't have government office there. Or, or you can buy these lands and build a small community center, and then, and then get yourself a, a room for cable for people who don't have their own. Could come and look for jobs, kids could come and do their homework, add to, do their schoolwork. So those are some of the options you've got with the money. If, if you just wanna say, let's just do what we're doing and send the rest of it back, then we'll finish the environmental review as it is, and we'll work with the co-op and, and get y'all your cable. If you wanna try to get a building with, with some improvements, then we'll need to hold a, a public meeting where we actually advertise the meeting. Take input from the public as to, you know, within, within the things that you can do with the money, what you wanna do, and then after that, y'all would decide to move ahead with an amendment to do whatever y'all wanna do. So those are your two options.
What kind of timeframe are we offering that?
You're looking at a two-year completion, which is the other thing with, with co-op is, I don't know their timeline, we, that, part of that meeting with them is, what is your timeline to get the stuff in? Get your contract with the state finalized. I don't think they've got the same environmental hurdles we've got, even though it's all federal money.
And what kind, what kind of time?
I said, we've got two years to finish everything up.
But I'm saying, what, what kind of time do we need to be setting as a meeting in Central Florida?
Yesterday. Any questions?
Who does the negotiation with, say, Central Florida? Is it our attorney, or is it you, or?
It's not gonna be me.
Now we know who it's not gonna be, but.
Well, you, you do have a firm you hired that's majoring firm on this. That obviously, the, the amount of work that they were anticipating is not there anymore. They could be, they do have a guy that's, that's an expert in, in broadband. It's not the guy that, that we work directly, but it's a guy that, that's, that's, it's a large firm, so it's out of their office, like, yes, in Washington.
Midtown?
No.
No.
Steve Elias is the guy that I work with, I think it's Panoni is the name of the firm, and he helped with the application. So you could use his firm, and again, basically, you, you agreed to work with them, but we don't have a contract. So you would, you'd then negotiate with them, whatever we think we're gonna need from them, which is gonna be a lot less than we thought. So you would, you'd negotiate with him, whatever we think we're gonna need from them, which is gonna be a lot less than we thought initially. Cause initially, we had to develop a package to solicit for a broadband provider, and then we had to develop a set of plans to bid out. The actual construction of the broadband, and then we had to oversee the broadband. And, and those three items are all gonna be done by Central Florida, with, with their own money, so we're not borrowing what they're paying for.
They're set up.
Yeah, they should be in your office.
Is it gonna be five per object?
It's gotta be in the ground, it's gotta be in the ground five, too.
I have a question. If, if they were to have a building with the access for computers for people in town, I'm assuming somebody would have to work there to monitor. Would some of that money be used, so the city would be responsible for paying some money?
At the end of two years, this grant needs to be done, money's gotta be spent, so if you invest in a building, you're literally investing in maintaining it, and, and, and staffing.
Okay, so sidewalks.
I have a follow-up question on that, I've been involved with many, many multiple million dollar building projects. So to raise funds, and I've had the ability to do that, is one thing, to go, I wanna build a project, I wanna build this building. But to actually, as she just mentioned, there's gonna be variable costs, there's gonna be fixed expenses as well. So to maintain a building, what generally happens to towns, to organizations, is we get a donation, a multimillionaire says, hey, here's a million dollars, build a building. You build a million dollar building, you cannot afford to now maintain it. So you've got a town like Otter Creek, a hundred people, you've got the intercity or the interlocal agreement that's expiring here in just a matter of a month. They're, they're legally liable to provide all these, all these services to the town people that they can't afford. So I just, this is my question and my statement to the council, be very, very wise, because if you go, hey, we wanna build a community center. You have, you have year-long expenses after that. You may get the money and go, oh, we're gonna put up a million dollar building, but now your expenses to maintain it, to keep it up every year, is gonna be fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars on a million dollar building. So where's that money come from? The only place that money's gonna come from is from us.
Alright.
So I, I just, I want you to know that ahead of time, with capital campaign projects, getting money for a building is one thing. So here's my real question. So if there's gonna be eight hundred thousand dollars, can they take two hundred thousand dollars aside? Can they invest that, use that money for yearly operational expenses, and, and use six hundred thousand to build, which the answer is no. So if you build.
When we close the grant out, all of it has to be spent.
Yes. And, and you can't take any to invest that for your future operational expenses. And when you're fundraising, you always wanna fundraise your operational expenses, put it in a fund, invest and pay for that building. This, if you go with a building, the, the income has to come somewhere, and the only place it's gonna come from is the town residents. Who already can't afford the services that are gonna be, gonna be coming up here in a matter of a month. So just think through that very, very wisely, because it will make or break the town.
So is the, the only other option, you said, there were two options, the only other one is sidewalks?
Yeah, I mean, there's not much, because it is items that actually are eligible under that specific COVID, COVID funding. And I realize COVID's sort of behind us, but the money's not. So I mean, things like, you know, you, you can build a center where, when people are sick with COVID, they can stay there until they're well, and then go back home. But really, is that something you wanna do now? Uh, there's just not, and you can't, as I said, you can't do water system improvements, you can't do sewer system improvements, you can't do drainage.
Can we do sidewalks, like, all together to build one big?
No, it's gotta be sidewalks in front of houses. It's, it's sidewalks in your residential areas. Which, you know, Otter Creek's on, it's the whole town, but.
Can you use it to pave the roads? Nope, just sidewalks.
There was a question in the back, can you use it to pave the roads?
No.
Sidewalks and that.
But if you do sidewalks, then the question becomes, how wide are your rideaways? Do you have enough land that you own next to the road to put in the sidewalk? I don't know the answer to that.
And, and we could use it for, like, sidewalk inside our little park area?
No, sidewalk. Basically, the idea is, people wanna leave their homes and go wherever. Uh, these, these are five foot wide, so there's separate distancing. Um, but also means you need enough rideaway to put them in.
With the money to purchase rideaway.
Yeah, but there's basically, it's uniform act, which means, if you decide you wanna use to purchase rideaway. We have to notify each property owner of our intent to purchase, you're probably better off getting an easement than purchasing it. Either way, you've got to get to the process, you've got to let the property owner know, hey, we're looking at, we want for a sidewalk in front of your house, we're gonna need this much property. Um, and, and we're looking at possibly buying it or getting an easement up for it from you. Then we've gotta go hire an appraiser to appraise the value of that property. Gotta hire a second appraiser, look at the first guy's work and say, yeah, it's reasonable, he's gonna, it's a good value for that property. But again, whether you purchase it or whether you purchase an easement. And then you make the offer to the property owner for that easement, or, or acquisition, and they either accept it, they don't accept it. If they don't accept it, theoretically, you've got eminent domain, but make it happen. So basically, you need everybody to pretty much be on board to selling that, or whether it be getting an easement, or the piece of property to the town. Cause I mean, obviously, you can't do five houses, skip a house and do five more, I mean, it just don't work, so.
Moment of silence.
So you're saying sidewalks, community center, is there anything else off the top of your head that you could go, hey, this money could be used for this?
Here, okay, I'll give you one more that I don't think you're gonna be able to come up with. We're doing some, we're doing this in Hawthorne, where basically, they've got a nonprofit that basically is their food bank, where they give out food once a week. And, and they're working out of one, one of the churches right now. And we're at, we've acquired, we've acquired a piece of property, building a building for them, and then the city is leasing them the building at a dollar a year. Again, you're back to who's gonna pay the overhead.
Who's paying the overhead?
Yeah.
And it's not feasible for this town.
Uh, well, you asked, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent, it's not feasible for this town.
No playground program?
No.
So.
Now, there's, there's actually a grant, if you can apply for, called, for, 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 Florida Recreation Department Assistance Program, under DEP.
But it's not this.
But it's not this, but you can get, you can, you can get up to two hundred thousand, put in playground, but the negative is, is a one-time reimbursement at the end. So if you're gonna get the grant, you're gonna have to carry the two hundred thousand till the end, and then get reimbursed. So which means a lot of credit from the lender if you don't have two hundred thousand available. I think we may have run one of those three years ago, like, maybe in the eighties or nineties, long time ago.
No fencing, just cement?
Anybody else have any questions about that? We don't want you to have to stay the whole meeting.
No, that's, I, I, I need some direction.
Okay.
And the direction is, hey, let's just do the, under the broadband, get it done, close it out, send the money back, and we can move ahead with the environmental review for you.
And you need this direction tonight?
Need it soon, and then, that's about a six-month process once we really get into it. And I've stopped my people, because it's a whole different thing if you're adding that second activity. Um, so I need that fairly soon, and then you probably need to coordinate, you said you knew the guy from Central Florida, weren't you?
Yes.
So if you wanna coordinate a meeting, we'll be glad to be there.
I'll call him tomorrow, and then we'll set up a schedule, and I'll let you know, as soon as you get the answer. And, um, I think we're having a workshop for our budget this month.
Yeah, that's another thing we need to set up tonight, to see when everyone's available.
As soon as you don't give us direction, I don't want you to move ahead with what we're doing, or we'll schedule a public hearing and talk about options, either, either way you wanna do it.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can get the meeting with Central Florida before the workshop, and then.
Yeah, well, that'd, that'd give you an idea, because once I know how much they're gonna charge, and, and by the way, with this sheet on the second page, just so you're aware of it. When I say low and moderate income, there's a chart, there's, there's two things, one is, the ACT is actually a different federal grant. That, if somebody is making hundreds, these, these numbers, which are two hundred percent of property, the, the top number comes through. They can actually sign up, it, independent of us, and get thirty bucks a month, that probably goes directly to the provider. So that, in effect, if the provider's only charging thirty bucks a month for their broadband, they're getting free broadband for, for two years, until the problem goes away. The bottom number is what our gross income per household would be, which we would have to get independent verification of that. Uh, so basically, if, 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 if that's where we're gonna go, and, and by the way, it's interesting, we would comment that, we're gonna have to get income information from them. To verify their income is below these numbers, and, and, and then work with Central Florida to get them that six months' worth of servicing, you know, basically, out of the grant. And it would go directly to Central Florida. Any other questions, guys? Hopefully, that helped.
Absolutely.
You have been helpful, hopefully, though. I'll get just a bit more, like, no sense, okay, that's fine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, for coming.